Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Watkin County Council meeting for May 4th, 2021. It is 6:00 PM and we are meeting virtually. Would you please call the roll?
Brad Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Bird. Todd Donovan.
Here.
Ben Ellenboss.
Here.
Carol Frazee.
Here.
Kathy Kirschner.
Here.
Thank you. Could you please display the flag and then everyone please join in the salute to our flag?
Welcome to the meeting. For instructions on how to-
Sorry Kathy, I forgot about you rolling those credits. Do you need to do that? Is that something you want to do now? Or is that something that we can do without?
You can go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. All right. County Executives Report. You have anything for us tonight, sir?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Council, and good evening all the residents and listeners to this meeting. I have one main topic I would like to talk to you is about vaccination. I think this is a critical point for not only our county but for our nation. And as you know, all the people who are interested to see our schools open, our businesses open, our other life getting back to normal, restaurants open, I think we need to get to about eighty percent, over eighty percent vaccination rate. We are the most luckiest country and most progressive country that who have more vaccine than the demand. If you look at what happened in India, it is showing the the strength or the possibility of this virus, that how deadly it can be if we become complacent. If we say, well, you know, I really don't need to. I think that we should learn that lesson. The same thing happened in England. They had three different waves and they had to shut down their country twice. And and same thing happened in Italy. So I think that my appeal, my request, I'm on my knees, I'm asking everybody that please, there is vaccine available, a lot of, we have a lot of appointments available. I think Health Department is working on creating a mobile unit. And because in anticipation of the farming community will be starting very soon, the berry harvesting. And we would like to be pre-prepared that if there is a situation that we have to reach out there, like we did last year for testing, we want to do same thing for the vaccine. That please share with us if there are some apprehensions, some questions, please pose those to us. We will share the information we have. But my request is, please, please, get on to this vaccine wagon. And there may be some questions, I understand. But right now, if you look at worldwide, several hundred million people have been vaccinated. So that should prove something to us. So that's that's the only appeal I had and I want to support, I want to thank the council for your support in this campaign. And please give this message out to people on your Facebook, on your emails, on your whatever connections you have to reach out to people. Please spread this word that vaccine is our key to become normal. And we so badly we want to become normal. We will deal with other issues as we go along. And we, like I said, we are the luckiest country who has this kind of ability that we have more vaccine than than the people who are wanting it right now. And vaccine supply will continue to be like that. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Executives. To do. Next up, we have five sets of minutes to approve. To entertain a motion to approve.
May they approve?
We have a motion by Donovan, a second by Councilmember Kirschner. Any corrections, deletions, or comments about the minutes? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
And Tyler Bird is absent.
Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bird absent. Next, we have our public hearings. Could you please play the video that tells the public how they can testify?
Welcome to the meeting. For instructions on how to join the meeting to speak, please visit Meeting information, including Zoom meeting link, phone number, webinar or meeting ID, and password are available under the meeting date at the bottom of the page. Members of the public may join the meeting online or by phone. The meeting is broadcast live and recorded. All speakers will have three minutes. When you've joined the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to request to speak. To virtually raise your hand online, click the hand icon at the lower area of your screen. To virtually raise your hand by phone, dial star nine on your keypad. Council staff will call on you by the name listed, or if you're joining by phone, by the last three digits of the phone number from which you're calling. When called upon to speak, click the microphone icon to unmute. Or if joining by phone, wait till you hear a message indicating the host unmuted your phone. Please first state your full name for the record. Staff will announce when your three-minute speaking time is up. Camera sharing will not be offered at this meeting. Thank you for joining the meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. Just to refresh our, the public, these are public hearings on specific topics. There will be an open session after these three hearings that where general, general comments can be received. But these are very specific. The first one is AB 2021-243, which is an ordinance ordering the closure of a portion of Manly Road to motorized vehicular traffic. Do we have a Public Works Staff Report of any kind, Mr. Carter?
Good evening, Council. Jim Carter, Public Works Engineering. No staff report. It's my understanding this had a work session last on the twentieth of April. And and I can refresh anybody that needs to be refreshed for the public hearing, but I'm available for questions.
Anything before we open the hearing? Okay, seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this issue? This is the closure of a portion of Manly Road.
We have one attendee with the hand raised, oh, the hand went down. If you'd like to speak on this item for Manly Road, please raise your hand. We'll go to Chelsea Campbell. Go ahead, please, Chelsea. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm here with Chelsea Campbell. I'm Shawn Campbell and we're married, a couple here living on Manly Road. I just want to say my name is Shawn Campbell. We live at 641 Manly Road, which is the direct-like location of the proposed gate relocation. Basically, the same thing happened at the other end of Manly Road, the north end of Manly Road. There was a gate, a location was moved for the same type of activities that we're having down in our end of the road. Basically, the land use for this, for this road is tree farms. It's all just basically logging timber companies and privately owned, family-owned farms. There is a pipeline access for Trans Mountain Pipeline for maintenance. There's a road maintained for that and then the Puget Sound Energy Power Lines. There's a power grid lines that run through this area. So basically, that's the main, this is the Manly Road. Basically, what we're seeing is residences is, there's no fire flow on Manly Road. There's no fire hydrants, so there's no way to control large fires other than just the fire truck. And we have a lot of trespassing, a lot of illegal activities, a lot of which is camping. People are camping on Manly Road, often having campfires adjacent to or directly on top of the pipeline, not knowing that that's where it's located. So for these simple reasons, for the safety of the fire in the community, and just basically the land use has, you know, it's time, I think, to close this road for vehicle access to reduce the amount of these illegal activities that are happening. As as landowners here, we're the ones that often pick up a lot of garbage and debris and deal with the, with basically, you know, unsafe conditions with vehicles parked and camping. So that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you for taking this into consideration. Let you know that I I support the gate. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and Council, what would you like to do?
Move to approve?
Okay.
We have a motion by Donovan, a second by Frazee. Discussion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird. Is absent, excuse me. Todd Donovan.
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Bird absent. Next up is AB 2021-244, which is a resolution adopting the Watkin County Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, Transition Plan Within the Public Rights of Way. And is there any kind of, Mr. Carter, do you have any, anything to say about this one?
Good evening again, Council. Jim Carter, Public Works Engineering. This is our ADA Transition Plan for Public Rights of Way. And it is, again, was introduced, or excuse me, there was a work session prior to the introduction last week, and I'm available for any questions that may crop up in the public hearing or from Council after the hearing.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Anything from Council before we open the hearing? Therefore, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to testify?
The first speaker is Brad Brown. Let's see, a hand went down. If anyone would like to speak during this public hearing on the ADA Transition Plan, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon or dialing star nine if you're joining by phone. There are no hands raised.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and turn it back to Council.
Move for approval?
Second.
Frazee moves, Brown seconds. Discussion on the motion. Okay, please call a roll.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird is absent. Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Bird absent. Yeah, thank you, Jim. Our final public hearing tonight is AB 2021-245, which is a resolution supporting a Community Development Block Grant for public services, for the public services grant application. So who's here from staff representing this issue?
Good evening, Council. Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive. As recognized, this is a CBG grant that we work with Opportunity Council. This is just a required public hearing that's required associated with it. And these dollars have been used for low and moderate income individuals in Watkin, Skagit, and Island County. If you have any more questions, I can handle those after the hearing and go from there.
Okay, thanks Tyler. All right, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak to us on the Community Development Block Grants?
The first speaker is Doug Gustafson. Go ahead, Doug. This is for the public hearing on Community Development Block Grants.
Yeah, okay, sorry. I did not mean to speak at this. I meant to speak later, so.
We'll wait for you for open session.
Okay, bye.
If anyone else would like to speak during this item?
I don't know what, if we count Greg as public in the public hearing, or do we just let him speak after we close the hearing? I'm not certain what to do here.
There's a title to speak during the public hearing if he wishes to.
Let's let him. Go ahead. We'll call on you, Greg.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Buchanan and the rest of you for supporting this. We've been in this partnership to provide information and referral services at the East Watkin Regional Resource Center using these grant dollars. And so it's been very helpful to be able to staff the Resource Center and help people navigate services, not only that are offered by Opportunity Council, but by other organizations in the community. That's primarily how we use it in Watkin County. We also, this is actually a three-county grant that Watkin County is, applies for every, every year. And we use the other funds similarly in Island and San Juan Counties, our three-county core service territory.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
There are no other hands raised at this time.
We'll close the public hearing and Council, what would you like to do?
Move to approve?
Second.
Donovan moves, Frazee seconds. Discussion. Councilmember Donovan.
I just want to acknowledge the people who are both in our counts, or sorry, county staff and the nonprofits who like keep these grants going. Shout out and thanks.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, let's take a vote.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird is absent. Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
And that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bird absent. That concludes our public hearings. We will now move into the open public session where members of the public may speak to the council on issues that were not scheduled for public hearing tonight. So other issues, you can bring them up during the open session. So we've already played the videos. Let's go ahead and open the public session and call our first speaker.
The first speaker is Mark Ambler and then we'll go to Mark Stidham. Go ahead, Mark Ambler.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, hi, I'm Mark Ambler. I'm a Watkin County resident. Oh, wait for the third. I'm a Watkin County resident. My family has been here for thirty years and I founded this thing called the Tier One Producer Association. I call it TIPA for short. And you know, tier ones pay eighteen percent of licensing fees in Washington State, but we're only allowed to grow two percent in canopy. So you know, these kind of things birthed this whole TIPA association. So since December of 2018, I've been writing letters and speaking at meetings like this and driving to and from Olympia to plead with like state legislators and regulators to increase our canopy. And finally, six days ago, the LCB unanimously approved a motion to double our canopy from less than 2,000 square feet to less than 4,000 square feet. And their current schedule would allow expansions to occur across the state on July 24th. So if you don't lift this ban by then, tier ones are going to have a serious problem. We're not allowed to get bank loans. We're not eligible for bankruptcy protection. We're not eligible for like federal emergency funds. If we got some of those, we have to return them, LCB said. This is our emergency help and we've been waiting for this for like two and a half years and you guys shut it down. So that's why I'm so involved, okay? So that's why I'm writing you letters. That's why I keep calling into these meetings. Like after the last meeting, I went out to the spot in Kendall that everyone was complaining about and there's no odors out there. There's not even a neighboring residence near the grow. Like it's surrounded by by fields and all you can smell is like the diesel from the trucks accelerating out of that double ninety-degree turn. And then after that, I went to several more outdoor farms and none of them had any odor. None of the farm, outdoor farms that I went to had any odor. I also went to eleven indoor grows and nine of them had odor. So don't believe me. Check for yourself. Indoor smells are more than outdoor and greenhouse and it does so all year round. And I don't want you to trust me. Please do not trust me. Go check for yourself. It's it's night and day. So it's been twenty-seven days since the ban started and there have been no meetings scheduled to start planning the revisions of the code. This ordinance said it was for public health and safety and the original motion had an emergency declaration. I want to know what's going on here, okay? And I am obligated to find out what's going on and then tell the rest of your cannabis industry that is in your community what is going on. So this is really driving for me. It's troubling. It's stressful. I'm still trying to keep my operation going at the same time. And I just, I'm asking for help. I'm asking for somebody. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mark Stidham. Go ahead, please, and state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, this is Marcus D. Stidham. I am the homeless advocate on the Much beleaguered Homeless Strategies Work Group. I also am the Civic Engagement Director for Serenity Outreach Services, SOS Bellingham. Please, please, I understand there is a movement to try to disband the Homeless Strategies Work Group, HSW, I'll call it. Do not disband the HSW. The work there is just beginning. We're just, you have the group, you have a group of over twenty people who are gathered together, who are most keenly interested, almost specifically in homelessness. There's nonprofits and there's, and there's, there are council members there who are supposed to be monitoring that. How could anyone think that we have, we're done with our work there at the Homeless Strategies Work Group? We've, we've had to endure Ann Deacon running the show since February, since early February. And and I can tell you that she has just been giving mountains of misinformation and and basing the recommendations to you, the council, that these are our recommendations. Let me tell you, there, there has been a split vote as we move along. It's not, it's not a unanimous vote like you see in city and county councils at all. No, we have a lot of people here. There's a movement right now that is actually on hold, that Barry put on hold with the Homeless Strategies Work Group, that that is asking for a more, a temporary emergency moratorium on camp cleanups while we gather the information that we know from the very last meeting that we had. We now know that the information, the data that the Health Department has been asking for and that you've been asking for, Hans has it in his, in his smartphone on an app. He can call up real-time numbers for you and and these are the numbers that I was asking for. And we decided that we weren't going to ask him hard enough for that. So so then I asked, should we have a temporary moratorium on sweeps? Could we do that, please, while we, while we try to gather that information? And the answer is going to be to disband the HSW? Oh, please tell me my ears are burning wrong on this one. Do you think that we've done such a bang-up job with the HSW that we should disband it altogether? Are you blind to what you see on the city streets? There's a sweep tomorrow on Cornwall Avenue, right out in front of Opportunity Council. Some people have been camped there for a year. Please come down and witness this with me. Come down at eight-thirty or so, you'll see it. I'll show you. We can talk about it there. But if you make rash decisions to take the advice of the city or or much, much worse, to to take some bizarre advice that we need to disband the HSW because we're doing such a bang-up job of it, you're wrong. I listened to your, to your committee of the whole today, along with several other advocates that you know and respect in your town. They are all flabbergasted. Their jaws are on the floor. I hope that they all speak to you tonight. Oh, my God, don't disband it, please, please. Emergency moratorium, we must stop the sweeps.
The next speaker is Misty Flowers and after Misty, we'll go to Dina Jensen. Go ahead, Misty. Please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you for my, for your time. My name is Misty Flowers and I represent Be Brave Washington, urging you to reopen Watkin County fully and end emergency orders. At what point will you decide to open the public meetings in person? What criteria are you using to justify the emergency orders? And when can children and adults breathe freely again? I thought as a society, we decided social privilege is a bad thing. Now our governor believes we should have a vaccinated and unvaccinated class structure. This is not a smoking and non-smoking section issue. This is a whites over there and blacks over there situation. This establishes a first and second-class citizenship. The vaccinated class are privileged and can gather and go to school and travel. The unvaccinated class are looked at like they are dirty scum with limited privileges. This is what my family has experienced for the last year and a half because of the mask mandates and the inconsistent emergency orders. My government doesn't bestow privileges upon me. We, the people, bestow privileges upon the government to act in our interest. And you are not acting in interest of the people by supporting free beer for a liability-free injection and endless lockdown measures. It's absolutely reckless. We at Be Brave Washington would like to know when do healthy families get to participate in society freely again as well? When will it be safe socially for our children to also enjoy public school? Or do we pull our students out completely because of the divisiveness that has plagued our community since the lockdown started? When will all families have the right to work again and go to school again? Some of us will never increase our risk of lung infections by wearing a mask that the science does not support. Some of us will never take another liability-free injection again. Some of us have learned the hard way to follow the money and to read the science ourselves. Just like you took an oath to protect the Constitution and my individual rights, I took an oath to first do no harm when working with others on their health. What are the long-term health effects of these liability-free, never-used-before injections? And what kind of future are you leaving for our children with a mass vaccination sites and propaganda? Please end all emergency orders now and stop the COVID vaccine program. If they're safe, why no liability? Why the censorship of those who urge caution? Why the coercion, the bribes, the social shaming of those who want body autonomy and informed choice? I urge you Watkin County Council to end emergency orders now. Please use your hearts. The Holocaust happened when good people did nothing. Speak up for what is right. What you do matters. I will follow up with an email for a response. I would really appreciate some answers to my questions. Thank you so much for your time.
The next speaker is Dina Jensen and then we'll go to Melissa Weisner. Go ahead, please, Dina. You have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. This is Dina Jensen, Birch Bay. I'm going to start, as I usually do, with a land acknowledgement because this meeting is taking place on land that is the traditional home of the Lummi and Nuksek people. And we do our proceedings in a way that is kind of right in the face of the fact that we've taken this land from people who used to live here. And now we are proceeding to do what we want to do. And so this is something we should think about seriously when we're thinking about how we are treating people who are marginalized in our community. Because when we take things away and we don't create space for people, it is a burden on all of us. And it is a tragedy for those who fully slipped through the cracks and aren't with us anymore. So yes, I am equally disturbed that there's a resolution to shut down the Homeless Strategies Work Group. I am very distressed that that's one more avenue of public input that's going to be taken away during a time when race and equity listening sessions have been created and people have given their input, asking for more meaningful engagement. We have less meaningful engagement now. And we have people who have been standing up to speak and try to ask for more powerful engagement and empowering engagement and they are being shut out. And how is that going to play out next winter? When people again are aware that there are people out there who don't have any place to sleep inside? We're not going to have housing next winter. Severe weather shelters haven't proven helpful so far. You don't have a good history. We don't have a good history. So I ask all of you to think, how can you meaningfully engage with your community and empower them to provide solutions? We don't need more sweeps. We need your community to be able to actually be acknowledged for the good things they have provided, rather than being designated as protesters and a problem. You need to recognize that they have lovingly given to your community. You need to help them and you need their help. Thank you, I yield my time.
The next speaker is Melissa Weisner. Go ahead, please.
Hello, it's Melissa. Technically Greg will be Weisner again as soon as your county stops messing with my paperwork. Anyway, first of all, highly inappropriate to let people make racist and anti Semitic comments during the comment section, yet you censor us for cussing. Just have to point that out, highly inappropriate and completely disgusting. That should have been cut off way early. They're sweeping weekly. I can't even find people that I need to be looking up on medically. They're I need somebody to explain to me why you think that is sweeping C Street and having everybody moved to D and then Cornwall and then sweeping D and having them move back to C. Do you see how much money? How much of our tax dollars are are they wasting weekly to do this? HSW has done nothing, they collected some data and now they're just going to close up shop? Like there's over seven hundred people out there. We have people calling SOS, hitting us up on Facebook. There's a family that's about to lose the place that they're living right now. The OC almost kicked a bunch of people out of the hotel because they almost lost funding. Like what part of this sounds like we don't need help? What part of this sounds like you should be closing up and taking the ball and going home? Like, how is that in any way appropriate right now? Like, I know you guys don't want to work with us, I know you don't like us, and I know the city is sweeping weekly to punish everyone. But this is so inappropriate and this has gone on far too long. And it's embarrassing as a citizen of Bellingham, as a resident for twenty years, I've raised my family here. And I am just, I'm trying to be the change because nobody wants to do it. And and the kicking and screaming from this NIMBY crowd is just it's disgusting. I am surviving a DV, I'm a working single mother. And I'm putting in more hours dealing with this than the people who are literally taking my tax dollars to do it. Come on. Seriously, grow up and do the work. We're here, we're doing it, you need to join in. Thank you very much, have a great evening.
The next speaker is Mary Stidham. Go ahead, please, you have three minutes.
Hello, this is Mary Stidham. I'd like to speak on a few issues that we have regarding homelessness. First of all, I listened to the committee of the whole and I heard Ann Deacon today state that people were not using base camp because they were being deterred away from using it by some people. She was very vague about who these people were that were deterring people away from base camp. I can only assume she means the advocates. First of all, I I need to make it clear, that couldn't be further from the truth. The advocates would love if everyone took shelter and there weren't people on the street for us to care for on a regular basis. I deliver soups and have been doing so every week on Thursdays since it since October. I speak to many people on a regular basis. They choose not to go to base camp or they are kicked out of base camp or banned from base camp. Also, during the Camp Two Ten on City Hall's lawn, base camp closed its doors to anybody who hadn't spent the night there the night before. So that meant everyone in Camp Two Ten, when the weather got horrendous, they could not go into base camp for fear of COVID spreading. So the fact that base camp is not full is not the fault of anyone on the streets. It is truly just an an issue with base camp itself. Base camp does great work, but it isn't everything for everyone. And that I know has been acknowledged by many of you. And we need to find other solutions and to the problems that we have. Also, I want to speak about the regular sweeps that have been happening. Moving people around the county and not supplying them with any additional places to go or options as far as shelter is absolutely outrageous. Now is the time that we need to come together and find other options. And that can only be done in the homeless strategies work group. It's a work group that's put together in order to find solutions for shelter and for people on the streets. Shutting it down makes no sense. At this time, we have so many more people that are facing, got to be facing homelessness when the eviction moratorium is relieved. So please give that consideration and do not end homeless strategies work group. Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak during open session, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon or dialing star nine if you're joining by phone. We'll go to Doug Gustafson next. Go ahead, Doug, and then we'll go to Rebecca Malloy. Go ahead.
Hey, hey, this is Doug from Homes Now. We operate the first two tiny home communities to exist in Bellingham. Currently, we house forty five people who are homeless. That's around a third of base of base camp. Our villages are resident managed, very inexpensive to set up and can scale up quickly. Unity Village, for example, costs eighteen thousand dollars a year to operate. We have a forty five percent rehousing rate at this time, meaning forty five percent of the people who leave our program find permanent housing. We were able to set up Swift Haven Tiny Home Community in only a few weeks because the county and the city and Homes Now work together to get a site online quickly. The county provided the structures with emergency funding. The city provided the site with emergency powers. And Homes Now has the track record to manage a site, to help more people out of homelessness. Homes Now has proven that we have been successful in providing a good quality of life with safety, with our resident managed approach at two villages and helped residents get into permanent housing. With a resident managed approach, we are able to provide housing, scale up quickly with minimal costs with good results. It's the best bang for buck option in Watcom County right now, as far as homelessness. I was extremely disappointed at the county committee of the whole meeting earlier today, where it was suggested that Swift Haven and Unity Village were classified by the county as barely sheltered, as if we're like just barely hanging on or something. Homes Now maintains the highest standard of living possible on a shoestring budget. We have been successful. In a shelter, even if it's a robust shelter, does not get people out of survival mode. In order for people to get out of survival mode, they need their own unit and their own privacy. When you're in a congregate shelter, it does not allow for people to have their own privacy and it promotes a dysfunctional environment. I was also extremely disappointed when I saw the agenda for tonight's meeting at the idea that the homeless strategies work group would be disbanded. As chairman of of one of the main organizations in town working on homelessness, I'd like to be part of that work group. I, the work group, even if they're ineffective, as far as like what they can actually do, literally, it has provided a good overview of what's going on with the organizations involved in in working on homelessness. And it provides like a good, like to the public, they can kind of like see where the challenges are and who's not doing what and and where the gaps in the net are. And I think it needs to continue. I mean, like, it's kind of weird, it just seems like this was slipped in like low key, like really quick. And I I just think that it would be a mistake to disband it. It's done a lot as far as actually getting things to happen. So I have a lot more to say, but I'll leave you with that because I'm out of time. So, good night.
Next speaker is Rebecca Malloy. And then after Rebecca, we'll go to the caller with the phone number ending in three nine eight. Go ahead, please, Rebecca.
Hello, this is Rebecca Malloy. I have enjoyed being a Bellingham community resident and member for forty years, as have many of our homeless. If you look at the records in this country and the studies, most of the homeless people in each of our individual communities across this country were probably born and raised in our given community. I am very sad that we have over a thousand, maybe fifteen hundred people that do not enjoy homes in this community. I wholly support the homeless strategies committee. It must continue. The the dialogue and the voice of the community coming together to solve this critical problem and lack and sadness for the homeless and the homeless children that that participate in our public schools. We must continue the dialogue and it must be robust and it must expand, not become diminished by a select few voices of power in this, in this, in this community. I'm very emotional as I'm discussing this. I wholly support Swift Haven, the small communities that are building. I don't care eight feet by eight feet, I am a carpenter. If I was homeless, I would love living in an eight foot by eight foot warm cubicle where it's safe, I can lock the door, I can have a safe place for all of my belongings that I could carry on my back. I support how these they're they're corporations, but they're not, they're nonprofit corporations. I support the nonprofit corporations like Mr. Gustafson has helped set up and Marcus D. has set up. It is they're performing on a budget and that's critical. I do not support giving millions of dollars to corporations that are gleaning the money for their personal pockets. I believe every cent needs to go directly to the homeless and to their housing and their food and their healthcare and their transportation and their schooling. Thank you for listening. Good night.
The next speaker is the caller with the phone number beginning in three one zero and ending in three nine eight. And then we'll go to Banush Armani. Go ahead, caller ending in three nine eight. You have three minutes, please state your full name for the record.
Hello, County Council. My name is Jean Purcell and I'm a member of Be Brave Washington. I was told by my doctor that I cannot receive any of the COVID vaccines due to past serious medical issues involving blood clots. Blood clots have now been found to be a serious risk factor for all COVID vaccines. According to K Five News, Governor Jay Inslee today proclaimed that venues can segregate vaccinated people from unvaccinated people indoors and out by using vaccine passports. This includes churches. He said there will be a separate line for vaccinated people and unvaccinated people. Not only is this constitutionally illegal in the United States of America, it discriminate discriminates against those that cannot receive the vaccine for medical reasons or for any other reasons. But it seems that neither of these facts matter. Governor Inslee also stated that reopening will depend on how many people have become vaccinated. It used to be reopening depended on hospitalizations, cases and death. Why the change? I think I know why. It is common knowledge that Governor Inslee and his family are personally connected to the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. The goal of the Bill Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation is to use vaccinations as the sole resource to combat perceived illness. What do vaccine passports and populations segregated by medical status remind you of? They remind me of Nazi Germany, an entity that our country fought a world war to stamp out. Do I now have to wear a star on my shirt? That is the same as a vaccine passport, no matter how you look at it. These recent actions by Governor Inslee do not bode well for the future of Watcom County. We see the counties across the country that are rejecting this fascist doctrine begin to thrive and attract newcomers by the thousands. Where do you think these newcomers are coming from? And I think I have a moment to say, I heard today that the county is supporting giving liquor to people in order for them to get a COVID injection. Call it a beer, call it whatever you like. But if you don't have the intellectual capacity to see how disgusting it is to ply people with liquor in order to encourage them to receive a medical injection. I really don't know. I really just don't know what this, you know, what the world's coming to. And I want to thank you for listening.
The next speaker is Banush Armani. And then we'll go to the participant listed as does. Go ahead, Banush, you have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. We, the public, have been duped and deceived, and I will explain why. Listening to Ann Deacon today and all the misinformation that she fed you is so extensive that it takes one's breath away. I'm quoting this from someone else who was watching. For your information, more than sixty eight families, meaning more than two hundred individuals, including children and pregnant mothers, were kicked out of hotels and motels as of May first. You were told differently by Ann Deacon today. And that was due to Opportunity Council running out of funds. This I I I just cannot understand how our community, how our government, how our officials could allow something like this to happen to people. I'm extremely angry, forgive me. The second thing is about shutting down the HSW committee. And that is another piece of work from Miss Deacon. That is simply to shut the public down. So hopefully, you know, uh, everything will die down and nobody will have anything to say about it. No, no place to go to talk about it and demand for change. The third item is regarding the continuous sweeps of our unhoused neighbors. These sweeps are debilitating our most fragile citizens. They are traumatized on a weekly basis with every single sweep. And they lose more of their belongings and there is no safe place for them. And I will have to back up exactly what several other people said about, and and this is, this is a broken record about base camp, that it is working for certain number of folks, but it doesn't work for others. So please stop saying that everybody needs to go to base camp. We have to understand that these unhoused folks have certain situations that don't allow them to be either welcome there or for them to feel safe to be there. And then there is the other thing about the pointing time number that was given out by Andy Ken, the number being two hundred and eighteen. Where do they get these numbers from? We have at least a thousand homeless people in this, in this town, in this county. And you, the council members, need to go out there And you, the council members, need to go out there and look at what's happening in our community and stop listening to Ann Deacon. I wish she would go away and take a hike and let you guys to hear the truth because us in the community know what's going on. Please take our word for it.
The next speaker is Dez. Go ahead, please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Desiree Sperequetta. And I just wanted to speak to the County Council tonight. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak. It's been stolen from us in different forums. So my first demand from the county is to help stop the sweeps. I'm going to tell you that, you know, there is still a huge bit of the community that's just reveling in trauma from not only January 28th, that huge violence act of just that, that huge show of violence that the county helped take part in. But the community was changed that day and the sweeps haven't stopped and they will not stop unless you guys help us. The city is not going to stop the sweeps. They don't care. It's very clear. And you see it in the way that they treat the homeless, the way that they continue the sweeps. It's horrible. You know, they don't, they don't care about the health of these individuals. What they care about is getting them out of our vision. They just want them hidden. So if the county could kind of step up and help influence the city in stopping those sweeps, we would super appreciate it. A lot of the trust is lost already, but maybe you guys can kind of help fix that. My second demand is to work with Serenity Outreach Services. They're such an amazing group and maybe they're louder than you want them to be, but they're going to be the solution. They are the solution. The city officials are not the solution, clearly. So, so please, you know, help us, help, help us help the homeless. It's a huge group of advocates and volunteers and, and people with amazing ideas and it, you guys have no other option, really. All, all the other options that I've seen or that have been talked about are still pending or there's no budget for it. Or, you know, there's always a problem. Serenity Outreach Services, give them a chance. Please sit with them. Please talk with them. Please get Seth Fleetwood to sit with them as well. And finally, my last demand is do not disband the HSW. The Homeless Strategies Working Group is really our only voices advocates for the homeless since the city's already stolen our voices in city meetings. They've stopped it. Only what? I think three to five people can talk now. So please, please continue with the, the working group. They've just started. They're just, I mean, not just started, but they're just getting started and actually acting on what they've been trying to do or saying they're trying to do. So please, please, please influence them to not stop that. And also a huge part of that again is because they are our voice. Advocates can come on and just speak freely. They can't do that anymore in city meetings, which is a shame. Please help be the change. Please. I think that's all I have to, to say tonight. Thank you for this time.
The next speaker is Cynthia Seidel, and then we'll go to Gail Adderley. Go ahead, please Cynthia. State your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Seidel and I'm a resident of Bellingham and a settler on the land of the Lemmy and Nookstak nations. I'm also a volunteer of Serenity Outreach Services and I'm here because I heard the Homeless Strategies Work Group is going to be disbanded. Which I think is a big mistake. Since coming here in September, I have seen the disparity that, that plagues this city. I came here believing I could find an active and compassionate community and city, but I have been disillusioned. What I have seen in the past several months is nothing short of disturbing. I was on Cornwall Avenue yesterday across from the Opportunity Council. On one side of the street, there was a group of people who were strolling, patrons no doubt, wearing nice clothes, while on the other were the discarded and downtrodden, our unhoused neighbors, who have been consistently swept, as far as I can tell, about the end of January, back to back, week to week. The two sides of this city of subdued excitement or the city of callous indifference could not have been made more clear to me than it was yesterday, and I am impassioned about it. There are people dying on your streets, dying from causes they should not, such as freezing to death. Whether you believe it or not, these are your citizens and many would like to be stable, housed and healthy. The Homeless Strategies Work Group is just one way the people can be part of the solution, since the city and county are wholly unwilling to try, short of kicking them around by using the police as their tools and telling them to go somewhere they cannot. Most cannot, also known as base camp. I implore you to please keep the Homeless Strategies Work Group intact if you value your positions and your humanity. Thank you. I abide my time.
Next speaker is Gail Adderley. Go ahead, Gail. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Gail Adderley and I am calling because I'm very concerned about the homeless situation in this community. It's, we have a serious, serious problem. There are people languishing on the streets, suffering from lack of water, lack of food, lack of shelter. And this is like the worst time to discontinue the Homeless Strategies Work Group, the work that they're trying to do to get these people sheltered. These are human beings. These are our fellows, brothers and sisters. And it's unconscionable that our community is letting these people suffer in this way. It is like literally illegal for them to exist because they don't have a home. And that's just wrong. There's nowhere for them to go. The police come in. I've been there. I've helped. I've been working with Serenity Outreach Services. And the campers say, where do we go? And they're told, go to base camp. Well, I'm banned from base camp. Oh, well, that's not an answer. There is no answer. We need shelter for these people. And we need to get ahold of the data that Hans at Base Camp has on his cell phone, apparently, saying how many people he's banned, because that's at least how many houses we need. That's at least how many tiny homes we need for these people. Not to mention the people who won't go there because of the violence and other circumstances that happen there. It's, there, I'm, I'm, I'm out of words. I just can't express how disappointed I am in our community that we can't step up and help our neighbor and that we would want to turn our eyes. There are people that were in a light industrial area on a sidewalk. They got swept. Where did they go? To a creek bed. Do you think that's a better place for people to be? No, it's not. Or off of the side of a trail where kids go running by. Is that a better place for them to be? They need somewhere, somewhere that is set up with sanitation, with water, with the things that humans need, because that's what they are. They are our fellow human beings. And just please continue with the work that the Homeless Strategies Work Group has started. And thank you. I just don't have anything else to say.
If anyone else would like to speak during open session, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon on your screen or dialing star nine if you're joining by phone. There are no other hands raised at this time.
Hey, thank you, Kathy. We will close the, the open public session and we will go to the Council Finance Committee and Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Watkin County Finance Committee met today. First item up was AB 2021 dash one, sorry, 263. Request authorization of the County Executive to enter into an amendment agreement, number one, for funding, support and implementation of the Duffna, Ditch, Culvert and Floodgate Replacement Project.
Councilmember Brown, I think you're out of order. I think you needed to start with a consent agenda.
Oh, sorry. I'm reading off the Finance Committee section. Yes, you're right. Okay. Watkin County Council Finance, Council Finance Administrative Services Committee considered four items under the Council Consent Agenda. These received a variety of votes. I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that we move forward with items two and three first, which received unanimously vote. I so move.
Okay, items two and three were voted unanimously out of committees and Mr. Brown has moved those items. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, see none. Kathy, could you please call a roll for items two and three?
Brad Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is absent. I'll go to Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Bird absent.
Allow me now to go back to item one, which is AB 2021 dash 253, request authorization for the County Executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watkin County and G6 Hospitality to extend the lease through September 2021 in an amount not to exceed $60,000 per month. This was reviewed by the committee and received one yea vote, yea vote, one no vote and one abstention. And I'm, and I move without recommendation to full council.
Okay, so this is moved for approval without recommendations. Is that correct, Mr. Brown?
That's correct.
Okay, and I think the email that we were expecting to see from Legal came this afternoon, so that was a little more information. Discussion on the motion. Okay, please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is absent. I'll go to Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Brad Brown?
Yes.
That passes five to one with Councilmember Bird absent.
All right, and the last item on the consent agenda was AB 2021 dash 272. Request authorization for the County Executive to renew a collective bargaining agreement between Watkin County and the Deputy Sheriff's Guild for a period of January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022. This received one yea vote and two no votes and therefore I cannot move it forward with a recommendation to the full council.
So we would be open for a motion made from the floor then on this item if, if someone
I'm making a brief.
Brown seconds.
Brown seconds Donovan's motion. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Brown?
I had requested that there be some information regarding the reasonableness of the, of the new contract compared to other jurisdictions. We received that information and I'm personally satisfied this is reasonable.
Okay, other discussion? Okay, see now let's vote on the motion.
Tyler Bird is absent. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss? Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Bird absent.
Next item up was AB 2021 dash 263. Request authorization of the County Executive to enter into an amendment to an agreement, number one, for funding, support and implementation of the Duffna, Ditch, Culvert and Floodgate Replacement Project. In this case, the council is acting as the flood control zone District Board of Supervisors. This received a recommendation or vote of three zero and I so move.
Discussion on this motion.
I'm last on, so we just did consent agenda and my thing has AB 2020 to five six coming up next.
Yeah, 256 was actually next as item number one. Item number two is 263.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was reading off the finance. I just realized the finance agenda and the main meeting agenda are at different sequence. You want to dispose of this or you want me to reread the first one?
I'll ask staff if, if we vote on this, is it going to really mess us up with timestamps and such, or can we just do that?
The preference is to go in order of the agenda, please.
Okay, so let's withdraw that if you would, Mr. Brown.
Yep, okay. So AB 2021 dash 263, request authorization of the County Executive to enter into an agreement amendment, number one, for funding and support and implementation of the Duffna, Ditch, Culvert. Sorry, I'm doing it again on a
Yeah.
AB 2021 dash 256, request authorization the County Executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Watkin County and the Washington State Military Department for financial year 20, Operation Stone Garden in the amount of $405,600. This received a vote of three zero and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion. Discussion. Please call a roll.
Todd Donovan?
No.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
And Tyler Bird is absent.
That passes six, or excuse me, five to one with Councilmember Bird absent.
All right, with the exception possibly of cherry point, this is going to be the, this will be read into the record more than the else I can think of. AB 2021 dash 263, request authorization to the County Executive to enter into an agreement amendment, number one, for funding, support and implementation of the Duffna, Ditch, Culvert and Floodgate Replacement Project. In this case, the council is acting as the flood controls and district board of supervisors. This received a vote of three zero and I so move.
Okay, discussion on this motion. Okay, please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown? Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is absent. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Bird absent.
The chair, fortunately, fortunately, there's nothing further from finance.
Okay, I keep turning my video off for some reason. I hit it with this pen. Okay, next up is Council's Planning and Development Committee. Mr. Mr. Brown, you chaired that this afternoon. Do you want to report out on it?
Yeah, okay, so they, there was AB 2021 257, there was a discussion and council motion to approve the public participation plan for Watkin County Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulation Amendments. Member Chris just received a vote of three zero. And I so move. Yes, it did.
Okay, we have that motion. Discussion. Okay, let's vote on it.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler, Tyler Bird is absent. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Bird absent.
Just there was no further items to vote from.
Okay. Make sure my pages are okay. So this, the next up is council appointments to boards, commissions and committees. First one is AB 2021 dash 255, an appointment to the Business and Commerce Advisory Committee for the Higher Education Vacancy and the applicant is Eve Schulte. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I'd move approve, move approval to appoint.
Brown seconds.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint and a second discussion. Councilmember Donovan.
I'll just keep bringing up that they don't let these people vote. It was originally proposed that they would be voting members and then it was changed by council.
Oh. Councilmember Kirschner?
Councilmember Donovan, can you explain or expand on that?
Yeah, there was an initial proposal for this Business and Commerce Committee. It was amended a few times, and one of those amendments was to not have the education representatives be voting members. So we ended up with a Business and Commerce Committee, and I keep pointing this out, and I'll continue to point this out. Where the largest employees in Watkin County are not representatives voting members. And I used to just stain on these things and point this out, but I'll I'll vote and approve it, but it's like you know, there's a whole bunch of big employers who are not represented on this thing.
Is there a reason for that, and what's the background?
Talked to Mister Bird and Mister Sidhu, they were the ones who were putting this together a couple of years ago.
Thanks.
Were the ones who amended it.
Councilor Brown?
Actually, myself and Mr. Sidhu, and the reason is that it's the Business and Commerce Committee as opposed to the employer committee. So and while I think we all value the education institutions, they're not private sector employers. Or they're not private sector businesses, more accurately.
Any council member Frazee?
Yes, just in case Ms. Schultz is Schultz is watching. This has nothing to do with her being on it. We just wish she could vote. Being in one of the highest players in the county.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
Yeah, if she is in attendance, and she'd like to address us, could we do that?
Absolutely. Kathy, is she there?
Yeah.
She is there. Eva?
Hello, good to be with you. This is Eva Schulte. I serve as Executive Director for Institutional Advancement at Watkin Community College.
Okay.
And I appreciate the consideration. It would be an honor to serve. My role at Watkin Community College is to oversee the foundation, communications and marketing and community affairs. I have a long history in working on economic development and economic opportunity, and am glad to be in Watkin County and appreciate the current conversation, all of Stamen commenting on that. But again, I would be honored to serve in this role and work hard to represent the business and commerce interests, and specifically, of course, the higher education role I would feel.
Well, thank you for being here tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ellenboss, I saw your hand go up and then go back down. Did you, did you have anything more?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask her a question, but she elaborated, and so it answered my question, and I greatly appreciate the fact that she wants to be on this board or commission enough that she showed up to address us, so thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to appoint? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is absent. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with council member Bird absent. The next item is executive appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. This is where the council confirms the executive's appointment. The first one, or the only one, I believe, yeah, is AB twenty twenty one dash two, sixty six. Request confirmation of county executive's appointment of Dave Brenn to the Development Standards Technical Advisory Committee. Do I have a motion to confirm?
I'll move to confirm.
I'll take Frazee's motion, and I'll take Kirschner's motion and Frazee's second. Any discussion on the motion to confirm? Okay, let's vote.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is absent. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero with council member Bird absent. Next up, we have items that have been added by revision. We have, the first one is for introduction. It's AB twenty twenty one dash two, seventy eight. An ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of Watkin County, a proposal to amend Watkin County Charter Sections five point four zero and five point four one to align signature requirements for citizen initiatives with Washington state norms. And that is for introduction. Do I have a motion to introduce?
Move to introduce.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion to introduce. Councilmember Kirschner?
And I quickly looked through this, but I just wanted to make sure I understood your you're bringing this forward so that Watkin County's initiative signature gathering requirements match the states as far as how many signatures you need. Is that generally your idea?
Councilmember Brown?
It's to match the the principle that the that matches the executive, the county executive vote count as opposed to the gubernatorial vote count. That's the only difference. So it just changes the threshold. But one of the things I think is concerning about the current language is the governor's vote count coincides with presidential elections, which are usually the ones that bring out the most voters, any, any presidential cycle, which puts a really high bar for our citizens to decide what they want us to do in terms of proposing changes to the way we're structured.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
So what's the, why do we need to do this outside of the structure of the charter review? Do we have a good reason, or or just because?
Well. Sorry, I'll let Mr. Donovan respond. He had his hand up.
Mister Donovan?
Yeah, we did this, and I forgot how to get my hand down. We did address this in the Charter Review Commission, and I think we and then the voters passed the, or getting the percentage numbers consistent, more consistent with the state's rules. But we have in our charter this odd thing that we didn't notice, and it never came up in the Charter Review Commission, that if the percentage of signatures pegged to votes cast in a county council, county executive election, which has, it's a pretty low turnout on your election. So nobody can qualify anything. So even with the changes that we made in the in the Charter Review Commission, which had bipartisan support, I think this is something that we missed. So this is, this is a charter amendment to be put to the voters to ask them if they want to peg it based on the same percentages that go into the state, but on the percentages of the vote that happened here in Watkin County. But I mean, if you look at the record, try to remember the last time any citizen has been able to qualify anything. So I, I, I think, I was kind of surprised that, you know, it didn't occur, I, Ben was on this with with me, I, it didn't occur to us that that was a barrier as well, that that it was pegged to the gubernatorial vote rather than the county executive vote, so it's, it's, it's changing it in that way.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Mister Brown?
Yeah, I just want to reinforce this. This is about putting power in the hands of the voters to decide what they want to do, and and all it does is it makes it easier for someone to put something on the ballot. It still has to pass the test of whether it's the majority of citizens who want it. But at the moment, you know, this is incredibly high. I mean, I think since the last charter review cycle, that the the number, the focus on presidential elections, I think, has increased significantly. And the downside for that for our citizens is that is automatically raised the bar for them even to have something considered on the ballot, and that just doesn't seem fair to them.
Mister Ellenboss?
What are all of us, actually?
So we're, we're voting to introduce this or not right now, correct?
Correct.
And then it'll have a, we'll have a pub, public hearing?
Mister Brown?
To, yes, Mister Ellenboss, I'll have a public hearing, and I've had discussions with Ms. Brown Davis and and we've, we've both agreed to actually push this out for for four weeks for public hearing, I believe. Because I, in part, partly because we've got a very full agenda at the next council meeting, but also partly because I, I'd like this thing to sit with the public for discussion and thought to give everybody adequate time to think this through and provide us comment at a public hearing.
Mister Ellenboss, is your hand still up, or?
Yeah, it's still up. Yeah, I, I, I like that idea because the thing I like about the charter review process is that it's, there's so many opportunities for the public to come and weigh in, so I like that. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Kirschner?
So when I look at the therefore be it ordained, we would change it so that signatures would need to be collected on eight percent of the vote cast in the last county executive election for a regular initiative and three percent for a mini. So eight percent of eighty thousand roughly is six, sixty four hundred, almost sixty five hundred signatures. And that would be opposed to what, one forty? Set eleven thousand signatures if we went on the gubernatorial race. So it would significantly reduce the number of signatures that would be required to be gathered. Could be a lot of initiatives coming forward.
And just for clarity, it doesn't change the voting required for it to pass.
Correct.
It only changes the votes, the number of registered voters required to put it on the ballot for consideration by everybody.
Any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Donovan?
My mic was still on. Yeah, then this is for introduction. I think we have some good conversations about this. And when we, we get to it.
Anything else? Okay, please call the roll for to introduce this.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is absent. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes five to one with council member Bird absent. Next item is AB twenty twenty one dash two, seventy nine, ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of Watkin County, a proposal to amend Watkin County Charter, Section eight point two, two, to align requirements for amending the charter by citizen initiative with Washington state norms. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Introduce.
Okay, it's Donovan's hand first, and then Frazee, I'll take that as a second. And maybe, Councilor Brown, you could explain the difference of this one from the last one?
Yeah, this one is, sorry, I'm just throwing a bit of a blank.
One's first statutes and one's for charter amendments.
And again, it's just the only change is it does, instead of using the gubernatorial vote count, it uses the county executive vote count.
Okay. Discussion on this. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Tyler Bird is absent. Todd Donovan?
I got you, Todd. I was a yes. I saw it.
Ben Ellenboss?
Little, no.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner? I meant staying from this. I don't want to vote no, but I don't want to vote yes. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes for introduction of four to one with one abstention and council member Bird absent. Okay, our next item is AB twenty twenty one dash two, eighty one, resolution concluding the work of the Homeless Strategies Work Group and transferring responsibilities to the Watkin County Housing Advisory Committee. Do we have a motion?
Move approval?
Okay.
Second, we have a motion and a second discussion. Councilmember Donovan?
So this is not to be introduced? This is a resolution to decide right now?
Yes.
We just got this.
Councilor Frazee?
Can you repeat the motion again?
It was a motion to approve. Yes.
Yes, I appreciate all the work the Homeless Strategies Work Group has done and moving it along. Now we have action items that are going to be moving forward, so I know a lot of people spoke about this tonight. And now the action can start, and we have we now we have a worksheet that we can, we know where where the gaps are, where what we have in our county, and then the action items that we can take. So I think it is time to move it along and start taking more action. So I know people had concern about the Homeless Strategies Work Group. Maybe not meeting it as much, or I'm not sure if it's going to be dismantled, but I think the action items are going to be moving, and they're already moving. And that's the important part. Things are happening, and we're helping.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
So as before, we're, we're saying that we approved the plan. We're not implementing the plan. It'll come back to us.
This is a completely different, this is a different, well, it's the same subject, but it's, it's just a resolution to move the work to the the Watkin County Housing Advisory Committee to move the recommendations that that came in to that, to move to them for, to look at it. And they can, they can look at it in the context with all housing, and and they're a little closer to the funding as well. Councilmember Kirschner?
Yeah, I'm going to support this because I've always felt like we had kind of a hodgepodge of committees and advisory boards on this topic. And I'm hoping that by fo focusing them into, you know, one, one group that's really working on this, that we'll get some some better resolution to some of the issues we've had. So I see this as a positive step towards, you know, hard and fast solutions to some of the housing issues we have in Watkin County.
Councilor Brown?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've, we've, we've got a a list of recommendations has come out of this group, and and by the way, I just want to publicly thank the the tremendous amount of work that's gone into this. We have those recommendations. The hard part now is to actually implement those recommendations. And I think if those recommendations, for whatever reason, either prove to be inadequate or something changes where we have to revisit this whole topic, we have the ability to reform this group and and get additional input. And then the final thing I'll say is that this does not stop public input into the process. It's just that the public input would either come to the council as it, as it has in the past, or would go to the, the county advisory committee instead.
Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, I'm kind of, this came out kind of sudden, so the, the, the.
Yeah, I'm, it's kind of, this came out kind of sudden. So the, the, the discussion this afternoon was about a kind of simple res- not motion, a resolution to accept the recommendations from the Homeless Strategies Work Group and have the Housing Advisory Committee sort of move into, into implementing those things. And, and, and then I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I, I didn't see that as necessarily a need to get rid of an, an advisory group. But I, I, I think there could be value in them continuing to do their work. So I don't, I don't think these things are mutually exclusive, the, the motion we had earlier today saying we're accepting these recommendations. Not that we agree on them, we're accepting them. We're going to task this other committee with, with, with work on implementing this stuff. Um, but I, I don't see that. I don't see a need to stop having that uh, uh, additional voice and perspective there. So I, and I, and again, I did, we just got this, so it's hard for me to kind of digest it in, in the short period of time.
Other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Frazi?
And we had um, a discussion during committee of the whole today. And I do appreciate how um, Ms. Deacon did report the information and bring it to us in a form that we can understand.
Other discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Mark Donovan?
Oh.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes five to one with Councilmember Bird, uh, absent. Okay, so next is our introduction items. Um, we have five introduction items. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Move to introduce?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of these items for introduction? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
No.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is absent. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes four to two with Councilmember Bird absent. Um, committee reports. Uh, our first committee of the day this morning was the uh, executive session where we talked about bargaining unit uh, with the sheriff's deputies. We've already voted on that tonight. So that's been taken care of. The next committee, was there anything else in finance, Mr. Brown, that you wanted to report?
So yeah, we had a um, very good report from Facilities Management. Um, led by Rob Nye, um, who, by the way, I want to just give a shout out to uh, Rob Nye and his whole department for all the uh, um, work they did to minimize the impact of COVID on county government in particular and everything from changing the way we, we open, you know, doors to washrooms to safety shields to uh, higher quality air filters in the air conditioning system. They, they uh, did an excellent job across county facilities and they deserve recognition.
Yes, I agree, Mr. Brown. Thank you. Um, next committee was uh, the planning and development.
Um, we had two other additional items. Uh, AB twenty twenty-one dash two-six-nine, which was a discussion with the planning department staff on a proposal to hire a consultant to develop feasibility study for creating an off-site buffer mitigation program. Um, this was, uh, a- again, it was just a dis- a discussion, but uh, it seemed like a uh, like the um, it was a good way moving forward to work out what our options are for buffer mitigation. And then um, uh, we had a discussion on the potential of affordable housing amendments to include tiny homes to the Waukam County Code, which is AB twenty twenty-one dash two-seven-zero.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Councilmember Donovan?
Like to thank Mr. Brown for chairing that meeting on short notice.
Yeah, me too.
I could, and to think I could have got a Hello Kitty Band-Aid if I'd got it inoculated like you did.
Okay, um, the next committee was committee of the hall. Our first item that we had was a discussion on COVID nineteen and uh, the health department reported that our numbers aren't looking great. We're kind of heading in the wrong direction. The governor did uh, make an announcement today that is putting a pause on any moving in and out of phases right now, uh, because it looks like the potentially we may be plateauing. So they're going to give it another two weeks to uh, to make any adjustments to counties. Um, our next item was a public works, uh, staff talk, just talked a little bit about franchise agreements and we're going to put those in committee now in the committee of the whole, so we can talk about them prior to public hearings. Actually, prior to introduction, that's when they're going to be scheduled. Uh, then we had a presentation from uh, Ann Deacon, the human service managers on efforts to expand responses to people experiencing behavioral health crisis. So uh, she went over some of the things that are going on with a kind of a pilot program that's going to be in the city of Bellingham for uh, unarmed responses to behavioral health crisis. Um, there's going to be more coming on that as we, uh, as plans get developed. And the county is going to have one as well. It's going to be uh, more of a co-responder model, just based on the geography of the county. Uh, it's a little bit, uh, everything's a little bit further away, so uh, they have to be a little bit more careful. Uh, and that was it for committee of the hall. So is there any other business for the council tonight? Councilor, Mr. Sado?
I just wanted to talk a little bit about uh, uh, Mr. Donovan brought it up that uh, it was uh, uh, too strong a uh, response to Camp Two Ten uh, when uh, uh, they were taken, uh, you know, when uh, they, they moved. I just want to to say that uh, we were very over cautious. See, what happened, if you look at the chronology of the events, uh, they came in June, stormed mayor's office. Uh, the we, our response was, mayor's response was very subdued. Then they came back, uh, these protesters uh, again, and they vandalized uh, City Hall and burned the flag and everything. And our response was si- still very docile. And, and uh, a- and, and then, then when this came, uh, basically uh, they were, I mean, I, I will just tell you what is on my mind and frankly, that they were challenging to the government authorities that we can do whatever. And, and I think Mayor was very wise. He kept it to himself and he moved it up two days from that date he declared for that. And uh, and when it came to discussion and cooperation with the city, we as county had these people to protect county courthouse and county properties. We did not really participate in Camp Two Ten uh, activities at all. And uh, the Bellingham Police was there not to clear the camp. The people on the roof were not there to clea- clear the camp. I think connecting those two is not correct. They were there. The people, the helicopter on top of, flying there, uh, the, the people on the roof. The Bellingham Police, they were just precautionary. They did not participate. They did not pick up anybody's tent. They did not pick up at anywhere anybody's belonging. There were people from public health. I know it seems that uh, it was a, a little bit uh, a harsh response. But we wanted to establish, and wh- why, when I say we, actually city had all the planning and they did share some things with us and uh, they asked for our support. And we said, we'll support you. And I just want to make it clear to public as well. I fully support Mayor Fleetwood's actions, not only on Camp Two Ten, but later on also what he has been able to do because I think, I think that uh, this was a staged uh, 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 event, the whole Camp Two Ten. And uh, and uh, and we had to do that, which is unfortunate. I don't think that we, we, we intend to do things like this or in this way, but our hand was forced. Uh, uh, we, we could not go for an escalation and a street fight. So, so I'm, I'm sorry, I, 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 I do not, do not relish uh, that, that whole scenario. And, and, uh, but I just wanted to say, yes, we did go a little overboard and that was the reason for that. So it was uh, I just, it was on my mind. I just wanted to share with you.
Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to second guess the mayor on this and I, I think he did a smart thing in moving the data. And this, the moving the protesters out of there had to be done. And I don't have any respect for the, the tactics they were using to um, escalate the situation. And, and, and I have neighbors who are down there trying to help folks who were then alienated by the, you know, the folks in black and all this, but you know, when this happens again, I don't think we need snipers on the rooftop with scopes. I don't think we need armored personnel carriers. I think people should look at the, the, you know, the SWAT assessment thing that said basically there was maybe a hatchet. So there was a disproportionate, you know, and then showing up in tactical battle gear. But my, my, my comment earlier today was that there should not have been federal presence there. I don't want federal law enforcement in our city as backup for situations like that, when you got a bunch of like pissed off teenagers with wooden pallets and maybe a hatchet. Um, so, but I appreciate, I appreciate what Seth was saying. Um, so I, you know, I, and again, I, I, I'm there's a reason I don't want to be mayor or county executive.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, if I can talk about two issues, the first is I'm, um, recently I went out with um, the homeless outreach services or the homeless outreach team, the hot team. Cause I wanted to, to, to see for myself, I've seen many of the homeless camps over the years. I wanted to see for myself um, their interactions with people and, and visit with some of the members of the homeless community. And, and there's a couple of things I was struck by that I'd really like to, to make sure that is considered when we get into this discussion. One is, is this, there's a constant comment that the people who are providing these services don't know what the, the accusations, they don't know what they're doing. And if only they knew what it was like to, to be in this situation or what life should really like on that on the streets. And the one thing that struck me is, I'd say at least ninety percent of the people I've spoken to who deal with the homeless population in any capacity as a homeless service provider, at least ninety percent fit into one of two categories. They have either personally dealt with uh, a drug or alcohol addiction and they've recovered. Or they have an immediate family member who deals with it or is suffering from long-term mental health issues. These are, these are people who live this experience pretty much every, every day of their life. And they've chosen, the way they've chosen to channel that experience is to get qualifications and then go out and serve these communities. And, and they really do need the recognition for that. And the, and we, we need to, as a community, we need to do a better job of acknowledging that these people have the training, they have the passion, they have the personal experience and they have an emotional commitment that is absolutely admirable to try and solve those problems. And then the second thing I, I wanted to say is that if you talk to any homeless service provider, and this really struck me as well, their number one job when they're out in the field is to start building trust with a population that has learned to distrust everybody around them. And it's essential that when, they can't serve these people unless they've built a sense of trust with them. And that's how they get these people connected to services and the, you know, I'm asking citizens to do whatever you can to build the trust between that community and the people trying to provide them services. And make sure your comments are, are always reinforcing that position. Cause if, if you do something that erodes that trust, you make it just immensely more difficult to connect them with services. So that's the first topic I wanted to talk about. And the second was COVID and the response to COVID. I, 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 if I may, I'd just like to share what just happened to me recently in Australia. So I, I had to return to Australia because I've got a very close family member who's terminally ill. And that involved me quarantining for, for two, two weeks. Now, when I arrived, I was met at the airport by the military and the police along with everybody else on the plane, which by the way, was not very full.
That was just for you, Red.
Uh, no, well, we did have three hundred seats and only twenty passengers and eleven crew. It's the best service I've ever had in an air flight in my life. Um, but we were met by the military and the police. We then received a motorcycle police escort to our quarantine hotel. And we were told in no uncertain terms, if we left the room without permission, there was a minimum, the starting fine was a thousand dollars. And they would extend our quarantine stay by at least an extra ten, fourteen days. We were forced to get tested twice. If we refused to get tested, we would, they would extend our stay by fourteen days. But so we gave up a lot of liberties. Everybody on that, on that flight gave up a lot of liberties to enter the country. And as I said, you know, under police guard and all the rest of it. Here's the thing, when I walked out of the quarantine hotel at four o'clock in the morning at the end of two weeks, it's like I, I dial the clock back three years. No one's wearing a mask. Everybody's, life, life is normal in Australia. The only exception is if you're on an aircraft or public transport, you have to wear a mask. But the restaurants are full, the kids are back in school, everybody's back at work. No one worries about COVID, COVID. Oh, that, that was something that happened last year, wasn't it? You know, and that's because everybody has pulled together and said, we will as a community. We understand this is serious. We will, we will wear masks. If there's an outbreak, we will agree to the, a community being locked down completely. And I've been police blocking the roads until that community's COVID levels drops. Right then, the, the smallest area they did was three square mile, or three, three mile radius. My sister couldn't get into the city of Melbourne because there was a police block blockade because where she lived had no COVID and Melbourne had an outbreak. And that's how they, that, there is no COVID in the general population in Australia. None. Only COVID is in the quarantine hotels. And if we do a better job at cooperating, we can get back to normal really rapidly like Australia has. With that, I'll get off my.
If, if I may add to that, you know, this virus is such that humans are the carriers of this wire. Just imagine if it was mosquitoes or, or, or mice or something else, we would have uh, extermination teams out. In, in this case, whatever restrictions we put, they have to be on humans.
Yeah.
We are the carriers. This virus doesn't travel on, 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 in the air, more, more further than a few feet. It doesn't uh, uh, propagate in any other way, but from human to human. So obviously, obviously, we have to put control on humans, whatever best we can. And those controls are keep your distance, wear a mask, wash your hands. Three simple things. I fail to understand how this simple message can be misunderstood. We could have controlled this thing uh, uh, six months ago. If everybody locks down and the life of this virus is less than uh, two weeks. If we lock down for one month, everybody strictly, we can kill this virus. So I, I mean, uh, I, I once again appeal, please get the vaccine. Please uh, take the precautions. We, this is the best way we can open our schools, our offices, our businesses, everything we want. It's in our own hands. It has nothing to do with, I, I like this or I don't like this. This solution is in our own hands. We have to take charge of that. So thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Brown for sharing that.
I just had one last thing. Australia had its share of people who, who were anti-masking, anti-social distancing, felt that the rules and the, and the, and the, and the state leaders were acting arbitrarily and, and, you know, were becoming authoritarian. All that went on in Australia. And then Australians sort of basically woke up and said, you know what, if we pull together, we can beat this. And that's what they've done. And so New Zealand's done the same thing. There's no COVID in New Zealand either, so.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
Yeah, I'll try and get this out without my granddaughter, but then, but I, you know, the Australia that council member Brown was reminiscing of, kind of reminds me of a few of the states that I've been to in the last few months. Texas, Idaho, Montana, Oklahoma, Wyoming. Being there felt like three years ago, people aren't yelling at each other or shaming each other or bullying each other over whether you were wearing a mask or not. And I'm not so sure that they have worse, worse outcomes than we do. So I keep hearing that the only way to get out of this is if we wear masks and if we get vaccinated and if we, you know, wash our hands. And I believe in those measures. But I asked last week if our health, you know, professionals could do an analysis of, of some of the places that have opened up more than we have or, or, you know, made the mask mandate voluntary and kind of compare and contrast so we could be informed as we move forward. And I didn't hear anything from anybody, so I think I'll make that request again. Because, you know, I, I do hear, I, I hear what some of these folks are saying. And, and, and I, I, I also hear what the health department's telling us. And sometimes it's completely opposite. And I'd just like to know what the unbiased statistics say. Because I, I'm pretty sure that they'll be helpful.
So I'm going to interrupt real quick because we have one other piece of business that we, that I failed to get before us. And it was, we had a motion today after we had heard the recommendations from the homeless strategies work group. We had a motion to recommend accepting them to the full council, but we did not vote on that tonight. So I am bringing that forward and I would move that we accept those recommendations.
Second?
Mr. Brown, seconds. Discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is absent. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with council member Bird abstaining, I mean, excuse me, absent. Is there any other, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, sorry, I just want to add one last thing to my comment about Australia. They achieved zero COVID without the vaccine. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying they're, they're doing vaccination now because they're trying to open up the country to the rest of the world. But, but it was, it was people working together for social distancing and limited movement and mask wearing. Because at the time, they, they, they stopped COVID in its tracks before the vaccine was widely available. And so I just encourage our citizens to, to work, to cooperate. Let's do the same because it's quite possible to do it.
Anything else for the good of the order? Okay. We are adjourned. See you all later.